Yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
I'll be seeing how you do.
How's it been going?
We've been good.
Weaved into the same.
It's right.
Inbred.
Can try to crack it now.
That's past, past tense.
You did.
Yep.
HPC.
But my understanding is by virtue. So switching gears, B and C. This is the main. The language so.
I want to ask you. Cover that together. You're going to try to explain everything.
Okay.
Got a little confusing and Bobby just sent the kind of clarification this afternoon.
Yeah.
So he'll go through that. We're really not voting on.
Done that.
A loan or anything. Just see, make sure you can read everything. Can you pull up here? Okay. I saw it totally. It's a little like, like. It's a little like this.
It's loaded. Just texted myself.
Okay. Awesome.
Good.
And it just, those two get to kind of go together. It's sort of kind of working.
She was shocked that. I'm going to have to stick with this training. That wouldn't point out taking. Again, that was her choice.
Okay, it's time.
Yeah. It is time. Time flies when you have fun. Yeah. No one does, no one does.
You going to explain this to the city, Billy?
I'm going to do my very best.
Just be in your way.
When they need it.
So I'm not doing any motions, am I?
Some of you skipped my report. I think.
I didn't think you were going to. How many of you, Daddy? Oh. So now.
On my one.
Oh.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to our January eighteenth council meeting. Would you please stand, join us in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing at the invocation?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilor Roach, would you give us a citation this evening?
Yes, sir. Everybody bow your heads, please. Dear heavenly father, we come to you tonight and we thank you for all that you have done for us and all that you continue to do for us. We ask that you lead and guide this council and staff to make the best decisions for our wonderful city. Dear Lord, we ask you to heal all of those that are sick, cold, and hungry. Take their pain away, heal them, dear Lord. I pray that those who don't know you will be led to you and be able to experience your love and your grace. Dear Lord, let us be used in your service and forgive us of our sins. In your name we pray, amen.
January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, council meeting to order. Like to consideration for approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions? Changes to tonight's agenda?
Would request an executive session for personnel.
Okay.
Motion to approve agenda with amendment.
Okay, motion to approve with amendment. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We do have one guest this evening, Mr. Shane Moore with the Cherokee Youth Foundation. Presentation at L I S C seventy-five thousand dollar grant award for Harmon Park's mini pitch field. Mr. Moore, welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, city staff, esteemed guests and fellow citizens, good evening. It is with great pleasure and a sense of profound pride that I stand before you today on behalf of Cherokee Youth Foundation, Cherokee Impact Soccer, in partnership with the Atlanta United Foundation. Today is a special day, a day that exemplifies the spirit of community, collaboration, and commitment to the well-being of our beloved city. As we gather in this esteemed chamber, we come bearing more than just words. We come bearing a symbol of our shared dedication to the growth and prosperity of the city of Canton. Today it is my honor to have presented to the city council a symbol of our commitment in the form of a check, an embodiment of the collective efforts that have gone into making our community a better place for all. This generous contribution of seventy-five thousand dollars in the form of a grant is a testament to the belief that we hold in the potential of the city of Canton and its residents. It represents not just a monetary value, but the countless hours, energy, and passion invested by the individuals who form the backbone of our organizations. We recognize that true progress is a joint endeavor and that we are privileged to play a role in supporting the initiatives that will shape the future of our city. The funds that have been provided are earmarked for the Harmon Park Soccer Mini Turf Pitch, a cause that aligns with our shared vision for a vibrant, inclusive, and thriving community. We believe that investing in recreational spaces such as this will not only provide a safe and enjoyable environment for our youth and adults, but will also foster community engagement and teamwork. In closing, let this check serve as a symbol of partnership, a partnership that transcends organizational boundaries and underscores the interconnectedness of our shared destiny. Together Cherokee Youth Foundation, Cherokee Impact Soccer, and the Atlanta United Foundation, in collaboration with the city of Canton, can continue to build a city that we are all proud to call home. A city where dreams flourish, opportunities abound, and the spirit of community prevails. Thank you for your tireless dedication to the city of Canton, and we look forward to witnessing the positive impact that will undoubtedly arise from our collective efforts. The actual check has already been presented to the city and a photo op will be coordinated at a later date. Related but unrelated, I'd like to present to the council and staff, this is from our WPSL team, Jersey. I'd like you guys to have this to show our appreciation of your support of that as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. Thank you to Cherokee Impact and your organizations for all you do for our city and our community. Thanks also to Atlanta United Foundation for this, for this grant. My understanding it was the first grant for a pitch filled in the state. So we're very excited to have that here in Canton, Georgia. Also would be remiss if I didn't recognize Councilor Tolan for his work on this, this grant and this initiative and a leader puts his feet where his mouth is. He also played in the soccer match at the multicultural festival, among other things. But I want to thank him for his work on this as well. So we're very proud of the, the field. Hopefully citizens can get over and see it and, and see all the renovations at Harmon Park. It's a wonderful park. And this addition is, is really wonderful, wonderful to have in our city. And so wouldn't be possible without community partners like you. So thank you for all you do for our community, so.
You have in your packet the draft minutes from the January fourth meeting. Are there any changed additions or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Do we have any information, items, or announcements this evening? If not, we'll move on to our ten-minute public input. And we have two citizens signed up to speak this evening. Mr. Thomas Weaver. Please come forward, state your name and address into the microphone.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Comments that I'll place tonight reflect only upon myself and no other person in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak, members of council. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the city's administration for its willingness to agendize the matter that you have approved fairly in regards to the adoption of the agenda under item eleven F this evening. However, I will not steal the city manager's thunder. I'll let him explain that matter to the council. However, for the benefit of those whom are new to the body, just want to share that there is precedent for this, but that will be explained again by the city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak. And it is my hope that the matter will meet favorably for council's consideration in the near future.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Chris Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Chris Everett. I live at one thirty-three in Canton, and I'm here tonight to request that the council consider requesting the local delegation to put on the ballot a referendum to expand the senior city tax exemption. It was put into effect originally in January two thousand and two, and it exempted the first two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of a senior's, well, of a senior's house from the city tax. Two thousand census data shows that the median value of a home at that time was a hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred dollars, which means the, the exemption exempted two hundred and fifty-two percent of a senior's home from city tax. And that amount, the two hundred and fifty-two percent, shows that the council at that time was attempting to exempt all of the seniors, all seniors from the city tax. Unfortunately, well, fortunately or unfortunately, depending on which way you look at it, the home values in Canton, as well as nationally, have exploded over the last few years. And since it was implemented, the council has not modified it at all. It exempted the median value of a home up until two thousand and sixteen. So for roughly fourteen years, the exemption exempted a senior from paying city tax. Then it went up incrementally until just recently in two thousand and twenty, home values exploded to three hundred and seventy thousand, then four hundred and thirty-two thousand in two thousand and twenty-two, and up to four hundred and seventy thousand in two thousand and twenty-three. So we went from fully exempting a senior from paying city tax in two thousand and two to barely, two-thirds of, of their house value is sheltered from paying city tax. So I would request that the council, request the local delegation, which is in session, put on the fall ballot a referendum for voter approval of modifying the city tax. Local municipalities such as Woodstock pays no city tax, seniors pay no city tax. Holly Springs, the amount of their exemption is four hundred and nine thousand. The Cherokee County School, School Tax had a exemption put into effect in nineteen ninety-seven, similar to the city's in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. That escalated by the amount of the social security COLA over the years to being four hundred and eighty-three thousand this year. If you apply that to the base amount of our exemption, the city's exemption, that would put us north of five hundred thousand when it sits at two hundred and eighty thousand because council has not seen fit to modify it for over twenty-two years. So I would request that you take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. We'll move into old business and item A, discussion of possible action on Ship Street abandonment. Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. So staff has received a request from the Canton Housing Authority to abandon the portion of Ship Street that is running the length of their property. I would note that there is no right-of-way that the city maintains beyond their property. All of the property surrounding the right-of-way is owned by Canton Housing Authority, so no other property owners would be affected. So staff does recommend approval of the Ship Street abandonment.
Okay. Ms. Watson, we discussed this at the last meeting. Are there any questions for Ms. Watson? Any discussion on this? Ms. McGrew.
Thank you. Is Ship Street already up to the standards of the city, or will that be taken care of during construction?
So I'm honestly not one hundred percent sure if it is up to city standards now. I don't believe that it is. I think that the, the width is, is more narrow than we require. Since we will be abandoning the property, they will be developing it as a single property. So we won't, the streets or driveways, drive aisles will not have to meet city standards.
So it will no longer exist as a street?
Roadways, but they will have to meet drive aisle widths. I mean, I think that they're expanding it. The plans that I've seen are where it would meet our current standards for roadway width.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion, city of Canton, abandon the portion of Ship Street running the length of the Canton Housing Authority property located and described in deed book eighty-three, page five sixty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor for the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next two items, items B and item C, I'm going to have the city manager cover those items together. We've had some, lots of discussion on these items and to be quite honest, a little bit confusing. And we've had some just recent updates to that, those items this, even this afternoon by our city attorney. So items B, discussion of possible action on a memorandum of understanding with the Canton Housing Authority regarding disposition of Jefferson Circle in financing of Fort Tanner Place. And item C, discussion and possible action on agreement for a two-point-eight million thirty-year loan to the Canton Housing Authority. Mr. Peppers, would you enlighten us, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes when I get complex matters, I have to doodle to figure out exactly how best to represent a situation. So I've doodled something for you. I've, I've placed it up there for you to look at. I, I think the easiest thing to do on this is to go back in history as to exactly what was discussed when this item first came up. So back in two thousand and twenty-one, the request from the housing authority was for the city to have a resolution of support for the redevelopment of Tanner Place. So at the time, they have a number of units at Ship Street and a number of units at Jefferson Circle. The idea was getting approval from the state so that they could demolish all of the units at Ship Street and replace them with brand-new units, which would account for the same unit count that they currently have between those two projects in one new project called Tanner Place. So the idea at the time was that the city would make a loan to the housing authority for two-point-eight million dollars at two-point-six-three percent interest for twenty years so that they could move forward with that redevelopment. As part of that discussion, the city at the time said, well, what are you going to do with Jefferson Circle? And the housing authority said, no. We currently have a small park off of Chistler Street there, Burge Park. It's very small. There's really no parking in that particular area. So one of the things the city said at the time was, well, maybe the city would be interested in that surplus property at Jefferson Circle once you have moved all of the residents out into new housing on Ship Street at Tanner Place and that site is ready for a redevelopment of some kind. So the discussion was that for our two-point-eight million dollar loan, at some point, the housing authority, after they've moved everybody out of that site, could have an appraisal done and the city could purchase that site for the appraised value. And if the appraised value fell under what we had loaned, we would just forgive our part of the loan and take ownership of the site. So that was the original concept. Fast forward, the project was approved by the state. The project is being redeveloped by C H A, Ship Street Redevelopment, twenty twenty-one LP. So when the state of Georgia does redevelopment projects and offers up loans, in a lot of cases, you'll see a housing authority, developer partner together on that particular project. Housing authority continues to own the land and the vertical construction is redeveloped by this development group, and that's how the financing is done. The loan from the city would be two-point-eight million, two-point-six-three percent interest, but thirty years. And the loan would go directly to the redevelopment partnership. The problem with that is if we loan the money directly to the partnership, then now we're asking to buy property from the housing authority, but the loan is actually to the partnership and not to the housing. So what's been discussed between the housing authority attorney and the city attorney is a restructuring of the deal so that the city is making a two-point-eight million dollar loan directly to the housing authority. The housing authority in turn is making that loan directly into the project. The project will repay that loan through the housing authority back to the city. In that particular case, if we're able to work out a deal on Jefferson Circle, we would just forgive that repayment between the housing authority and the city of that pass-through, and they would continue to collect those loan payments from the development over time and keep any of the profits beyond what the purchase of the, including the purchase price of the, of the land. So in essence, we're still getting what we want. We're just having to restructure the deal to fit with what needs to be done to make the deal successful for both the developer, the housing authority, and the city. So in doing that, what the city attorney has recommended is that council consider approval of those loan terms with those specific conditions and to allow the mayor to sign those documents after the city attorney and city manager have approved those based upon those terms that you've put forward. So the terms would be that the city will loan the housing authority two-point-eight million dollars for the Tanner Place project, that the loan will be for thirty-year term with the interest rate and other payment terms being the same as the loan from the housing authority to the developer. The housing authority would only be a pass-through and pay the city only for payments received from the developer. So as they receive payments from the developer as part of the loan schedule, they'll repay those to the city. And lastly, if the city purchases the Jefferson Circle property, the purchase price would be paid for by forgiveness from the loan balance. The other side of that is if the city decided that they didn't want to buy Jefferson Circle, we would continue to get those loan payments for the period of thirty years or until it's paid off. So that's, that's basically in a nutshell what we were trying to do with the loan document and the memorandum of understanding. The city attorneys basically said, if council will just agree to those specific terms and authorize the mayor to sign the documents on those specific terms, the attorney will make sure that the terms match the actions of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers, and thanks for your attempts to clarify, simplify complex matter. But just two items of clarification, if you will. Number one, the, the, the source of the funds for, for the loan, which hasn't changed, the, the original two-point-eight million dollar loan. And then the, again, you, you stated, but again stating clearly that this does not obligate the city to buy the Jefferson Circle property if and when it does become available after it's appraised. If, 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 you know, based on that amount, whatever appraisers were, whatever, we're not obligated to buy it. But we, we have the option or basically first, first right of refusal if we do want to proceed with that.
That's correct. So on the first item is it relates to the, to the funds used for the project. In two thousand and twenty-one, when council first approved the resolution for this, we were in receipt of new American Rescue Plan Act funding that allowed for the expenditure of funds for housing, among a variety of other topics. After we approved the original resolution, the federal government changed some of its rules as it related to ARPA. And so the city was able to recognize a portion of the funds we received in ARPA directly into our general fund so that we did not have to meet certain obstacles, certain, shouldn't use the word obstacle, certain thresholds that the federal government had put in place on the recognition of those funds. We would still use those funds even though they're currently recognized in the general fund, but they are ARPA dollars. And on the second piece, it's actually a protection for both the city and the housing authority. If the housing authority is going to dispose of property, they have to go through certain HUD regulations. If for whatever reason HUD puts some deed restrictions or issues on there, it protects the city from having to purchase it with those same restrictions. And likewise, if the city decided at some point it didn't want to purchase them, then, then we're not on the hook for buying that particular piece of property. We have not done any planning on that site. It's going to take a couple of years for them to develop the project at Tanner Place anyway, so we've got time to work through that process. The housing authority has time to work through that process. But ultimately, what we're trying to do is to honor the commitment, commitment that we had from two thousand and twenty-one, which was the two-point-eight million dollar loan, with the understanding that their project costs have gone up and they need the extra ten years or amortization to go out to thirty years instead of twenty, based upon those, those increased costs.
And we're still, the original project of replacing the thirty-five and thirty-five units to get seventy new units of, of housing at Tanner Place is, that's still basically the same.
That's correct. So the win, so the win for everybody is that our aging public housing that we've had that hasn't been changed in several decades will be replaced in those particular communities.
I think it's been over forty years, I think, since we've had new construction.
Well over forty years.
Well over forty years or more. Okay. Okay, thank you. More questions for Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no questions, I would like to make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Tolan, go ahead.
It is rather long. So I'm just warning you. I'd like to move, we approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Canton Housing Authority and authorize the mayor to sign a written contract to be approved by the city manager and the city attorney that contains the following terms. The city will loan the Canton Housing Authority two-point-eight million dollars for the Tanner Place project. The loan will be for thirty, a thirty-year term with the interest rate and other payment terms being the same as the loan from the housing authority to develop, I'm sorry, to the developer. The housing authority would be only a pass-through and pay the city only for payments received from the developer if the city purchases the Jefferson Circle property. The purchase price will be paid by the forgiveness from the loan balance. I think that covers everything. A second.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion or questions?
One question.
Mr. Tolan.
Is that covering all three of these items, just one in particular?
Item B and C.
That's going to cover B and C.
Mm-hmm. Any further comments, questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Okay, we'll move forward to item D. Discussion and possible action on intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Canton Housing Authority for demolition, demolition of the former Tippin School.
of the former Tippin School property.
I'll handle this one as well.
Okay.
So as you recall, uh, as part of ARPA, Cherokee County issued grants to local nonprofits. One of the grants that they issued was to the Canton Housing Authority because at the time Cherokee County was the owner of the former North Canton Elementary School or Tippins Elementary School site. And the goal was that the money going to the housing authority would be used to demolish the school portion of that site. So if you go to that particular site, there's actually two school buildings plus there's a historic gymnasium. Uh, the county gave enough money to demolish the two school buildings. Uh, the county decided that they didn't want to be the owners of the site, and they asked us, uh, if we would be willing to take ownership on the condition that we would agree to remove a deed restriction on property that will show up under 11 F later tonight, uh, that's now owned by the school board. Uh, the city agreed to that. We took the deed and now we own Tippins, uh, the Tippins site at North Canton. This intergovernmental agreement basically provides the housing authority access to our property so that they can move forward and complete the terms of their grant from the county, which is to demolish the former Tippin School. They have received bids, they have a bid ready to award, the project is covered with a grant, we just have to provide them access to the site. And so this intergovernmental agreement, uh, spells out that access to the housing authority to do that work on behalf of the city.
Again, to clarify, this for the school buildings and we are, uh, keeping the historic gymnasium.
That is correct.
Any other questions for Mr. Peppers, comments? Mr. Yon.
The gym is the county, counties though, correct?
No, the gym is ours as well. So we will retain that. Part of the reason why we wanted to retain the gym, first, first of all, it's historic. Uh, second of all, the actual structure is in pretty good condition based upon when it was built. For many people, they don't know that when the gym was first built, underneath the gym were actually the classrooms for North Canton Elementary School. So that was a whole school in itself in one building. Uh, right now, we're working on our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. You know, we've seen comments about indoor recreation space and things like that, so having a historic gym that we can use from a Parks and Recreation standpoint is a good thing for us. Uh, what the agreement also lays out is that we will have a redevelopment plan for that particular site, and we will work with the housing authority as it relates to having input in that redevelopment plan, uh, uh, in the city.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Yon.
Just to get it on the record, is my understanding that the school buildings themselves are in pretty bad shape and not really economically feasible to rehab as are, as they are.
That's correct. So, um, there were, when the, when the county owned the site, they looked at a number of potential uses up there, and basically everything they looked at, it was far cheaper for them to tear down the existing school building, which was built in the 60s, uh, and have a clean site for new construction.
Anything else? Mr. Green?
Mr. Peppers, who will be deciding what to do with the property after the demolition?
The city council.
Okay, thank you. Will there be site prep, uh, done after this demolition on the, uh, grant from the county or will that be an expense to the city?
It'll basically demolish the site and stabilize the site.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, Mr. Waterman.
To make a motion to, uh, approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Canton and the Canton Housing Authority for demolition of the former Tippin School property excluding the old gym.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Moving to new business now, item A. This is the staff report. This is for information only, uh, no discussion. Uh, this is for case C U P 2312 dash 001, request to operate a social club, civic or fraternal at 108 Riverstone Parkway, Suite 1108.
Hey, good evening.
You're not Mr. Green, but go ahead.
He had, he had to step out, uh, for an emergency, so I'm going to try to cover, and then if you have any questions, just let me know.
Please do.
This, yeah, this item is 108 Riverstone Parkway. Uh, the applicant's requesting to do a, uh, social club, civic club, which is a conditional use of this property. Property is owned general commercial, and it's in the major highway corridor of the future development map.
Great. Great, I believe, um, this is scheduled for the public hearing at our February 1st meeting, so we'll be getting more information and, uh, taking comments at that meeting. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item B, discussion on agreement for professional engineering services for plan review and technical support with Fries and Nichols. Ms. Watson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as Mr. Peppers mentioned in his, uh, manager's report last council meeting, we put an RFP out for technical, um, for plan review and technical services, and we received two, um, responses back from Fries and Nichols and also, um, Charles Abbott's Associates. Um, as you are aware, our utility engineer has recently retired, which, um, we've been unable to replace him at the ti, at this time. So in order to help, um, relieve staff of some of the planner, plan review duties, um, we have put out this RFP. Uh, we are recommending approval of both of the contracts. Each has different sets of assets that we believe that they could bring to the, um, in plan review. Um, this particular item is for Fries and Nichols, and I will be asking for a recommendation at the next meeting, or I will be making a recommendation at the next meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson on this item? Mr. Waterman?
Ms. Watson, provided that we get one or two of these, uh, firms under contract or under an agreement, who would they ultimately be responsible to? Who would they report to? Would it be you or?
Myself, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I will also say, I don't, um, right now foresee a need for the additional plan review because we, we're not overloaded at the time, so I don't have projects already lined up for, for plan review for them to do, but this is a just in case. We don't want to get into a position where we're overloaded.
Better safe than sorry. Good to get out of the curve, so, thank you. And then related, I guess item C, discussion on agreement for professional engineering services for plan review and technical support with Charles Abbott Associates. Ms. Watson, same scenario?
Again, this is, um, the, pretty much the same thing as I said before, except for a, a different firm, but has different assets to their firm that we believe would be helpful to the city's plan review staff.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Watson. Item D, discussion and request for reimbursement of electric bills by Park Village. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, good evening.
Evening.
On this item, if you'll, if you don't mind, I'm going to read a memo that I prepared for the council just to get this on record. You have a copy of that memo in front of you. Earlier this year, the Park Village subdivision, HOA, approached the city regarding some Georgia Power electric, electric bills for a sewer lift station within their development. They indicated to the city that the HOA had been paying this electrical bill for a number of years, 10 plus. Supposedly, there was a communication breakdown between the original developer and the city at the time of completion of that sewer lift station. The city was unaware of this electric bill, and the HOA simply continued to pay the bill without further consideration. When this issue was brought to the city's attention in April 2023, we immediately took responsibility and started paying this bill. The HOA sent a letter to the city in April of 2023, that same month, requesting reimbursement for its payment of prior electric bills. I informed that it was, informed them that it was the city's policy to consider reimbursement for bills paid during the 12 months preceding the notification and correction of the error. They declined this resolution or requested reimbursement for the full 10-plus years, even though they were unable to obtain actual invoices from Georgia Power needed to substantiate these payments for the whole 10 years. They did, however, provide us with Georgia Power statements dating back to March of 2019, and thus made a final request for reimbursement through that date. I'm attaching a list of the payments. I have provided a list of all those payments that they provided to us. The full amount of the HOA's request is 11,963 and 99 cent. Again, this is for the electric bills paid by the HOA between March of 2019 and March of 2023. The city initially offered to go back one year from the date of their notification. This offer was to reimburse the HOA 2,084.52. And so I, I did inform the HOA that that is beyond, uh, beyond what I can approve as city administration, that I would have to take that in front of council, and that is the reason it's here before you today for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Couple of things, I, I know after this initial meeting, this was brought to our attention, and we made the offer, which is the standard policy of paying one year. Um, it's my understanding then that the HOA, uh, pursued legal action against the city for?
Uh, they have not officially taken legal action, their attorneys have reached out to us, but it's just been some initial ink.
Okay, okay. And then, um, Mr. Ingram or Mr. Peppers, could you remind me also, um, I know a few years ago, uh, we worked with the HOA and, and, and this community on some paving of the streets, uh, I know we've had some issues with developers that have left these communities throughout the city, but I know in this particular community, uh, that I think there were some top coating of the streets and some of the alleys, I think that we went beyond, uh, what was typically our responsibility to, to assist the community out and?
In, um, I was just looking back in my notes, I think it was 2019, the city was working on its paving schedule for the first of 2020, and we had several neighborhoods in the city where the developer left before roads had been top coated, and Park Village was one of those particular neighborhoods. Park Village was, was a little bit different than some of the other neighborhoods in that there's kind of a pod in the middle of it or a section in the middle of it where the houses face the street, but the access to the houses are off of a private alley to the rear. Um, and at the time that we decided to move forward with, with the city top coating those streets, um, it was determined that while we were doing the work, we would go ahead and top coat those private alleyways as well on behalf of, because they had never been top coated. Um, I don't have a specific number as to what that amount was, um, but Park Village at the time was one of the sizable neighborhoods because it had gone without any road maintenance until we could take over the roadways, and we ended up doing a lot of deep base, uh, improvements in that particular neighborhood. I can try to go back and pull that specific information, um, but I, I don't have it at this point.
Okay. And then also just to clarify, um, just the, the electric bills for the lift station and like the, uh, what was charged to the HOA versus the city's portion, and that, that was responsibility of the developer initially, like how that was to be charged, correct, and, and paid for?
Well, there, there comes a time that a developer, when, when the infrastructure is installed in operation, they, uh, turn that infrastructure over to the ownership of the city. And at that time, generally the city then takes all responsibility for maintenance for electric, uh, electric bills, et cetera. And that occurred, and I don't have the exact date that that occurred, but I know that that did occur somewhere on the order of about 10 years ago.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ingram on this? Assuming that's something we will take in consideration, discuss and make a decision in our next meeting, is that, you have a question for Mr. Ingram at this time? Mr. Peppers, I think if we could get just some amount of, on the paving and what we did, uh, you know, above and beyond, uh, just be good to kind of know what those numbers were. Yes, sir. Thank you. Item E, discussion and possible action on employment of solicitors and public defender for municipal court. Mr. Rusbridge.
Mayor and council, you have before you a list of proposed solicitors, uh, and public defender for city court. Um, most of the solicitors are employees of our office, and everyone on the list has served before, so we would ask that you approve this list of solicitors and public defender for city court.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Rusbridge? Mr. Yon.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, Laura Derrick, Audrey Conley, Seth Stroud, and Benson Chambers as solicitors for 2024, and Christopher Bishop as public defender.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Item F, discussion of amending school safety zone map. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor and council, as I mentioned earlier on, uh, previous item, the city owned property adjacent to the school district, uh, administrative office on Bluffs Parkway, uh, up until the time that, uh, fire services were consolidated with Cherokee County. At that time, the county took over ownership of, uh, a portion of land adjacent to that site, but there was a deed restriction that the site would have a fire station built on it in the future. Uh, when the county approached the city about the possibility of taking over Tippins site, the request was that they would transfer ownership at no cost as long as the city would remove the deed restriction. The city did that. Uh, subsequently, the school district traded some land that it owns out, uh, off of Highway 372 with the county, uh, in exchange for this property adjacent to their existing building on the Bluffs. And as they did that and took ownership of the land, they've asked that the school safety zone map be amended to include the entirety of that site now showing that added parcel. So the map that you have in your agenda packet shows the totality of that particular site owned by the Cherokee County School District. Uh, so council would ultimately be amending the school safety zone map to reflect this particular parcel in its totality. Uh, the public may ask why we do that. School safety zone maps, uh, are, are done because the school district under state law has certain rules about what types of, of, um, weapons can be on site, uh, people walking by with a, with a weapon or people bringing something in their personal vehicle or what have you. So we adopt school safety zone maps as an informational item along with the school district and provide that information to our public safety.
Is this something that we would act on at the next meeting?
Yes, we will have it on the agenda for your action at the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Any questions? Thank you. And your report, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, in front of you is a copy of the December 2023 operations report. Um, I will apologize, I have not put it up on the website yet. I'll try to do that tomorrow. It's always under the city manager's page if you would like to find one of these or one from the past month. December was a, a pretty busy month, uh, for the city, uh, as we're wrapping up calendar year. Lot of work went on in the Building and Safety Services, uh, group. As you can imagine, people are trying to finish out permits and get things finished on particular construction projects. That information is in there. Uh, right now, uh, SPOSS collections are running a little bit above the estimate, uh, that was put, uh, for a percentage from the county. The December numbers that you The December numbers that you see in here are actually numbers that would have come in from October on SPOLOs because we collect those in arrears. We did list a few of the retirements that we had in the month of December, and there's lots of great information in there for you. As follow-up, I would like to briefly mention about the police chief search. So applications will end tomorrow. I had a chance earlier this week and even late last week to speak to our consultants. They've been pleased with the number of applicants so far. They think we'll have a quality pool to be able to select from. So the goal is that as they close those applications this week, next week they'll go through the process for reviewing those, screening those applications to make sure that the individual qualifications put forth in the job description and meet those particular items for the city. They'll sit down with me, and then we'll recommend a list of semi-finalists. I'll approve that group. Over the month of February, they'll do all the background research on the semi-finalists and get them scheduled for interviews. Interviews will occur the first week of March. It's my hope that we'll be able to bring to you an announcement of an approved chief finalist sometime within the first couple of weeks of March and hopefully get them on board before the end of March first of April timeframe. So I want to let you know about that process. As you know, back in November, council approved, October, November, council approved us moving forward with Condrian Associates. They're doing a compensation and classification study of city staff. Part of that work is going on right now. All of our staff are completing questionnaires based upon their positions and their job descriptions. That information will be reviewed by the consultant. They'll then look at that information in comparison with other jurisdictions that have similar jobs. Let us know if we have them in the right pay scales, we have all of our job descriptions written correctly, that they're classified correctly as exempt or non-exempt, and make recommendations on compensation based upon that. We hope to have that information in March. We did have a meeting earlier today, yes, today, with our insurance renewal team from Mark III. As you recall, we've hired them on to be our agent of record for our health benefits plan. We've met with them, they've got some initial numbers for us. We expect some numbers maybe the end of next week on our renewal rate with our existing carrier. The goal is for us to be able to bring you that in February for your approval so that we can start open enrollment for staff at the end of February first of March. I think that's just about it on those items. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Tullman?
One question, Mr. Peppers. In your discussion with the search firm relative to the police chief search, did they indicate the number of candidates that checked all the boxes yet?
They have not.
Okay.
No.
I guess we'll get to it when we get to it.
I want to say that we're somewhere in the upper thirties in total applicants. I couldn't tell you out of that group. So that's what they'll be working on in the next week.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
We have one council introduced item this evening, discussion and possible action on boards and commissions review. Mr. Peppers?
If I could make one comment on this, and I think I mentioned it to each of you. In reviewing this particular memo that we helped put together for the committee, there were a couple of things that got left out, and I want to clarify those. Two comments that were made in the committee meeting process was, were that the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, we might want to hold off on the appointments to that board until we get the new police chief position filled and get them in so we can find out specifically from them what support they might need and what have you. And the second conversation was relative to the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. The idea there was to relook at that group as a whole before appointing new members and talk about what the objectives would be with that type of group in the city, what they might help us out with, or if we wanted to go a different route and maybe just have conversations around the topic as town halls or what have you for the full board. Those didn't make the memo, and I do apologize for that.
And I will add on the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force, the members themselves have kind of requested that we take a new look at that, and they want to explore different formats for those discussions and all. So that's in addition to what the committee discussed. I wasn't at all the meetings there, but that information came directly from the task force members itself in addition to what was discussed in the committee meetings, so...
Mr. Mayor, as that committee's chair, I'd like to make a motion actually to approve the recommendations in that memo, including the two items that were left out regarding the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force and the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Wallin.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you. Got a few items this evening, I'll try to make it quickly. First, I just received official letter yesterday from the Department of Community Affairs just congratulating us on receiving our qualified local government status again, and this was based on the approval of our local comprehensive plan. So I want to thank Ms. Anderson for her great work on that and the team here at City Hall, and thank also to our citizens and everyone who participated in that work and keeping us qualified for another year or so. Couple other things, we know that the last meeting in December, we extended the abeyance for another ninety days, and also we put off taking any action on the zoning ordinance update. So we still need to decide how to move forward on those recommendations and have further discussions on those items. And I'd like to ask the city manager to get council and staff and schedule a work session just to discuss the zoning ordinance updates. So we're all sitting around the table discussing what the recommendations were and discussing the next steps and how to move forward, just so we don't waste any more time and just discuss the next steps and how we should move forward on that. So if you could do that?
Yes, sir.
Next, we do have one position on the Downtown Development Authority that has become available. Cindy Brooks recently retired from the Sanovas, and we want to congratulate her on her retirement and thank her for her service on the Downtown Development Authority. And I would like to appoint and nominate Corey Wilson, who's regional vice president of Sanovas, to take her place on the board, and so we keep that representation from our good partners at Sanovas. So I'd like to nominate Corey Wilson for the Downtown Development Authority and ask for a second for that nomination.
I second it.
So have a nomination, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. The next item is I did plan to discuss the senior tax exemption review. I did plan, and I want to thank Mr. Everett for his comments, I did, I do want to convene a committee or to discuss this. It is a complex issue, and I want to get together a few citizens to discuss that, both senior taxpayers and non-senior taxpayers. It does impact both, those discussions. As he mentioned, the senior tax exemption was put in place by referendum by voters in two thousand and two, and, you know, there have been a lot of factors that have changed since that referendum was put in place, and, you know, including, you know, just inflation, the increased assessments by the Cherokee County Tax Assessor's Office, you know, the inflation in general, but also the inflation of costs of services provided to citizens, you know, the rising cost of fire services that city pays to cover the senior homes that we cover the full assessed value of the homes, not just what the seniors pay for their homes. But there are a lot of factors, it's complex, and there's even some questions about, so the city council can't decide, you know, we're going to up the senior tax exemption. It has to be done by referendum. And there's even some questions in talking to legislators about how that has gone about. Do we go about and just, does it have to go ahead and cancel this tax exemption? And they have to propose a new one that the voters vote on? You can't modify exemptions, so it's a really complex matter that we really have to look into, but we could get a group of citizens and staff and probably a couple of tax council members that will discuss this and discuss the next steps and how to move forward on it. The county's also looking at things, and Mr. Everett had mentioned this, that the senior school tax exemption, the legislative delegation is looking at possibly putting a voter referendum on the next, one of the ballots coming up this year about increasing that, and the school board is, you know, agreeable to that as long as it doesn't, you know, impact their revenues that much. And they're, so they're looking into that now. The county's also looking at some options for a sales tax through a form of a loss, local option sales tax, host, a home set option sales tax, or T-SPOLOs, transportation special purpose local option sales tax. So they're having those discussions with citizens now to help with tax burden relief. And so again, we want to look at all these factors, and I'll be forming a committee to review those, and we'll get that started, and we'll sit down and have those conversations quickly and determine the next course of action to take. Again, I will appoint both seniors and non-seniors to that committee, so we're looking at that from all angles because it does impact everyone, and discuss how to move forward as expeditiously as possible. So, again, I'll ask council members if you've had any thoughts or if you've had input from citizens on that, please get with me and let me know those if you've heard from your constituents on that, and we'll be moving forward on that here in the near future, so. And by the next meeting at the latest. Again, we talked about boards and commissions appointments. I talked about this the last time, at the last meeting. Again, we had some updates to the board and commission committee recommendations tonight, and we approved those. So I'll just ask that you guys, I asked you to kind of submit your appointments, to submit those. I think we got some from a couple of you, but if you would, try to get those in to us, if you would, submit those, send those to myself, the city manager, maybe the city clerk before the next meeting, and let's try to get those in. And if you have some appointments you definitely want to make by the February first meeting, let's get those in and look at them and make them by the February first meeting. We have had some occasions by some people wanting to appoint some people that actually weren't, didn't qualify. Some of the boards and commissions have different bylaws, some require the citizens to live in the city limits, some do not. And then we've had cases of different council members wanting to point the same person to the same committee or different committees. So it'd be good if we had had everyone, kind of sent everyone in, and we could look at those, and the city manager could look at those and see if we have any conflicts, and we could kind of discuss those before we get up here and try to point, you know, the same people in different positions or the same positions there. So if you could get those in, including your appointments to the ethics boards, we'll get those in as well. And Mr. Peppers, if you don't mind, on the ethics boards, each of us would submit two names to that, could you just cover briefly what the qualifications for those members would be? Are there qualifications for them other than that they're city residents or...
There's a couple, there's a couple of things. They have to be city residents, they cannot have filed, hold on, I've got it here, give me just a second.
Can't currently be in jail or anything like that, I think. Sorry to put you on the spot, bud.
No, that's okay. I have them in here, I just have to find the right board. One of the things is they cannot have filed suit against a member of the elected body. They cannot have been convicted of a crime of moral turpitude with which they haven't been reinstated their rights. If you give me one second, I can find it on my computer faster.
And while you're looking at that, I guess the other thing on boards and commissions, again, we say this before, it's, you know, I think it's more important to get, you know, good appointees in place, who's going to do great work on these boards and commissions, than to fill them, you know, quickly, and we want to fill them quickly, but let's just get some great appointments. We do have our citizens' participation applications, and the city clerk can share you, share those with everyone if she hasn't already, but we have a lot of citizens who have applied and are willing to serve, so the goal is to get as many citizens, you know, from across the city, around the city involved as possible, so...
I found it.
I was trying to buy some time there, could you also? Taking the pressure off of them, so...
Members must reside in the city of Canton for one year prior to being nominated to the pool, and shall remain a resident while serving on the board. Once business before the Board of Ethics has been adjudicated, the members involved in that particular board are no longer members of the fourteen-member pool and are dismissed from future service. Individuals that have been an employee of the city or in a business contract with the city within the preceding one-year period are ineligible to serve on the pool. Individuals with a permit or rezoning application pending before the city or potential litigation against the city or any city official charged in the complaint are ineligible to sit on the Board of Ethics for that particular matter. Members must be twenty-one years of age, may not hold a public elective office, and have the physical and mental ability to serve, whatever that means. Individuals convicted of a felony involving moral turpitude in this state or any other state unless such person's civil rights been restored and ten years have elapsed since the day of the completion of the sentence without a subsequent conviction of another felony involving moral turpitude are ineligible to serve. Members may be removed by the city council for cause following a public hearing or for missing three consecutive meetings without cause.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So again, if you would think of appointments you want to make, get those in, and we'll take a look at those, and we'll, again, try to get these...
And I would just note that that is in the packet that you have.
Yep.
I was looking under ethics board instead of Board of Ethics.
Okay.
At the beginning, and I apologize for that.
Thank you. So we'll get those positions filled as you guys are comfortable with your appointments, and just keep moving forward here, so. That's all I have this evening. Thank you for your good work, and at this time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss personnel.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Stay warm.